Okay, so we'll have this, it'll be the same format. So you'll hear the candidate's statements and then we'll open it up to questions from the audience. And so I'll ask you to introduce yourself and give your name and then assist.
Hi, everybody. My name is Fiona Walter and I am the current board president for the Mountain View Los Altos High School District. And I am here tonight as a candidate trying to hopefully keep my seat and serve a second term. More? Okay. That's funny, it's surprising. So first off, thank you to the hosts, thank you to the Women's Caucus and whether Pinky went, thank you for sharing your backyard. Quickly, background about me, I grew up in Washington State, came down here to attend Stanford where I earned two engineering degrees. I've actually lived in Mountain View for 24 years and I have two recent Mountain View High School grads who are now in college. So my journey in education began with PTA work at the elementary, middle, high school levels. I spent eight years on the Mountain View Wisman School Board with two of those as board president. I've served on executive boards for multiple parcel taxes as well as bond campaigns here locally, including Justice Pass Spring co-chairing with Shaw Lee, the Measure E school bond for NVLA. And of course, four years on the Mountain View Los Altos Board currently president. So I'd like to serve a second term with NVLA to provide continuity on several key initiatives that we're working on as well as to sustain our students' academic success. So key areas include construction to accommodate our future growth, critical budget decisions as more students enter our schools. We do not receive money per student. We have one big bucket, it has to spread for however many students we've got. Support for struggling students, mental health issues, and of course, support for our teachers. So I'm very proud of our successful high school district. The hard work required is a challenge I love every single day. I would love to continue with the team and serve a second term. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sheila Fales and I'm not running for the board, but I'm here in lieu of Debbie Chora. So we want to thank everybody here for inviting her. Thank you for the opportunity to share some, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information about myself through Sheila. My sincere apologies for not being able to attend tonight's caucus. I have been a Los Altos resident for over 24 years, having moved here for the exceptional schools and welcoming community. I am a first-generation college graduate with a degree in computer science, working full-time in the technology field. I have three children who went to Springer, Covington, Block, Egan, and Mountain View High School. I volunteered at each school doing whatever I could, including serving as PTA president and co-chairing parcel tax campaigns. I am still active as a volunteer, not only because I enjoy it, but also because it keeps me connected on a personal level with parents, students, and the community. I've been honored to be a Mountain View Los Altos High School Board trustee for nearly eight years. During this time, I have enjoyed the challenges of advocating for all students in our community and helping the board maintain and improve the excellent education our district provides for all our students. I believe my board experience has me better prepared than ever to continue to serve the district and students in a meaningful way. The district has plenty of work to do right now. Highlighting some of it, I would cite overseeing the Measure E project.
Sorry, Julia, 30 seconds.
Okay. In summary, my board experience, which includes but is not limited to overseeing our past Measure A bond projects from inception to on-time and under-budget completion, previous successful WASC accreditation, and active representation of the board as a member of the District Wellness Committee and Partnership Council will enable me to provide valuable continuity and historical perspective as we move forward. I humbly ask you to continue to put your trust in me to help our students achieve these goals. Thank you.
How many openings?
There are three, two openings.
Three.
Three openings and four candidates.
And four candidates.
And the three women candidates are here tonight.
Hi, I'm Catherine Bonniget. I believe in NVLA, in the excellent education that is being delivered to our students, in the ongoing enhancement of our facilities and technologies to support the student learning, and in assisting all students to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally, no matter what range of challenges. In this life, I like to use the analogy of students being gems in the rough. The teachers, staff, and parents are the tools shaping the facets and polishing them to shine. Our community is the setting that supports them and holds them up to their best advantage. As for my background, I have an MS in math and a master's degree in computer sciences from Purdue, and I worked as a software engineer by profession. And I have also been a part-time K-8 substitute teacher. I've lived in Mountain View for over 40 years. While raising our only child, I volunteered in the classroom and/or as a PTA officer and/or school site council every year K to 12. At Mountain View High School, I was the PTSA president and the grad night treasurer. I was also at one point the PTA council president. I served as the NVLA Community Scholars Treasurer, and I've worked for the high school district in technology and emergency preparedness. I have been serving on the NVLA Adult School Advisory Board for a number of years, and I have been the webmaster for Challenge Team for five years, and this keeps me connected with people and organizations supporting children. I also happen to be a volunteer with the Red Cross as an EMT and Red Cross instructor. My son now teaches high school chemistry in the East Bay, and so I have a lot of great conversations with him on the ever-evolving curriculum and environment of a high school. I believe my contributions contribute to the governance of the school, and I will work diligently for NVLA.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shawlee Serke, and I am running for Los Altos School District Governing Board Member. Why am I running? I'm running because I think that in the next four years as we move forward, our school district needs someone whose focus and experience is in community building. A lot of decisions are going to be made over the next few months, and those decisions are going to require the buy-in of the community for it to be successful. So why do I call myself a community builder? I have a bachelor's in anthropology, cultural anthropology, looking at the relationship of individuals with the institutions and their communities. I later went on, oh, sorry. Thanks, Elizabeth. I later went on to get a master's in public health in community health, and specifically in community development, community building. And I love looking at how people can work together. My style has always been collaborative because if you know anything about nonprofit public health, you're expected to do miracles with like this much money. My family and I, my husband and I should say, initially lived in Los Gatos, and we love Los Gatos. But when it was time to settle down and raise our family, which is one daughter, we decided to come to Los Altos specifically because of its school district. And really, that's all the decision came down to, is who, and the better school district. We love our school district. I can't imagine living anywhere else but Los Altos. As a matter of fact, we were living in Stockholm, and we decided to move back to Los Altos specifically because of our school district. I have run, co-chaired successfully, the Measure N and Measure G-G campaigns with Fiona, Measure E. So I'm very committed to our schools. I've been president of PTA Council, so I've had the perspective of seeing what's happening in Los Altos School District, NVLA, and the Mountain View Wisman School District. I'm plugged into a lot of different groups so that I kind of get the perspective of what's happening in the greater community. I respectfully ask for your vote.
Evening, everybody. My name is Ying Liu. After hearing there's so many people said they have been living in this community for 10, 20, 30, 50 years, I stand up to tell you, I've been in this community for four and a half years. So I came to this community from San Jose. I've been living in, okay, I've been living in the Bay Area for close to 20 years. I was born and raised in Beijing, and I came here for the reputation of our school district. And I'm running for the board, for the Los Altos School Board. And I came, I came to the U.S. in 97 as a Chinese teaching fellow at Hamilton College. And after that, I got a scholarship from Michigan State University to pursue my MBA. Upon graduation, I was hired, I was one of the lucky ones to join Apple at the year 2000. And as you can imagine, so when Jessica came back and Apple stock was still, you know, pretty low at the time. So, and after 12 years, I grew from an entry-level materials manager to be one of the youngest senior directors at Apple overseeing multi-billion product line. And also, I took the responsibility of corporate the social responsibility. In the year 2012, when my daughter became one-year-old, I decided to quit my job and become a stay-home mom. After being involved in the school issues for a number of years, now my daughter is seven, I really see there are challenges in our community. So my top priorities are prepare our children to excel as global citizens of the future. Also, I feel like we need to, we need to bridge communities to solve issues creatively and practically. And with my procurement background, I feel I can contribute to strengthen physical accountability in particular spend Measure N to benefit our schools. I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Candidates will again have a minute to answer questions from the audience. You can ask a question of a single candidate or from the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm departing since I'm not Debbie and I will not speak for her.
So you can ask a question of a single candidate or for the NVLA Board or for LASD Board.
I have a question for LASD candidates. I was wondering with the new 10th site and the property in Mountain View that's been identified, what is your opinion and which type of school do you think should be put on that site? And then as a second question, I was wondering if you guys would support any type of teacher affordable housing at that site?
Okay, the question is for the 10th site for LASD, and this is for the LASD Board members, what is your position on the Mountain View site that's been identified? What would you, what kind of school would you see being placed there? And would you see affordable housing for teachers being placed there? So, and I'm sorry, we'll have a minute to answer.
Thank you. All right, so 10th site. I think the real win here is our relationship with Mountain View City Council. It takes a lot for a city council and a school district from, oh, sorry, from two different cities to work together, and I think that relationship is sacred and it's built on trust and it must be valued. Me personally, if that's what the question is, I would put a small neighborhood school there. Actually, what I really would love to do is put what I call a community school there. A lot of you know that I'm involved with older adult issues through the Center for Age-Friendly Excellence, and a lot of our seniors are living isolated by themselves in their houses. And this kind of goes back into the affordable housing. So I am looking at ways for teachers to rent rooms with seniors, kind of a win-win situation. What I, why I call it a community school is because I would put a small satellite senior center there so our seniors can volunteer in the classroom. Is that my minute? Oh, sorry. All right, well, I have more ideas on that.
Three questions should be three minutes, so I'll keep it short. With regard to the 10th site, basically, I think there's still a lot of questions have not been answered. First of all, what's the price, you know, for that 10th site? And the second, if we spent, you know, vast majority of Measure N money in a single site for one new school, what about the rest of the schools? The third question is, if, you know, whatever school being there, what about, what do the parents feel about, you know, that only that school, you joined almost $200 million of state-of-the-art facility, the rest of the schools are still in the, you know, shabby old portables and flats? So I think there's still a lot of questions need to be answered before we really make a decision. And secondly, with regard to affordable housing, I agree with Shawlee. I think basically, we definitely need to identify creative solutions, whether or not at that site or somewhere else, I think that's another question need to be answered. So I think I support all creative solutions.
Yes?
I have three questions.
One question, and and the questions are directed to whom?
Yes. So the question is, what school, a lot of candidates, child, and the other question is where do you all stand on 8:30 school start time? And then where do you stand on healthy school?
Okay, where do, so I guess it's your pick of which one to answer. Where do you start on 8:30 school start time? Where do you start on healthy lunches? And the third?
I just want to know what schools are about.
Oh, okay. And then I guess you could say what schools that your kids went to.
Okay, Mike, you didn't ask me, but my kids went Huff, Graham, Mountain View High School. And I'm going to pick the 8:30 start time question. I don't think it's cleared the governor's desk. It cleared out of the, out of the assembly and the, and those folks, so it's on his desk. I don't believe, it's cleared. But I would love an 8:30 start time. It's better for kids, it's demonstrated, better for kids, all kinds of research. We're in the, we're in progress with our staff. Start time is a negotiated issue in a school district, and you have to talk to your teachers and you have to make sure that they're on board. And we're in the early stages of, we've already had a bunch of research done, we've got the report to, you know, back us up that 8:30 is fabulous, and absolutely in favor of an 8:30 start.
My son went through the Mountain View Schools pub and then Graham, and then went to Mountain View High School. And as far as 8:30, I agree that the research says that 8:30 would be better, and so I would have to go with the research. That's what I have to say.
Hi, so my daughter went to Almond and then Egan, so she went through K-38, LASD. I have one child. She's now a freshman, sorry, she's now a freshman at Los Altos High School. I fully support the 8:30 start. Really, I personally think the later the better. Our kids are getting such less sleep, and it's become a real public health issue, the lack of sleep that our children are getting and the horrible repercussions of lack of sleep can have. So I see it even in my own ninth grader, even when she was in seventh and eighth grade, like not getting enough sleep. So to answer your question, yes, I absolutely support it.
So I have two daughters. My younger, oh, thank you. My older daughter, Angelina, who is seven, is a second grader at a Bullis Charter School. And I have a younger daughter who is four, exploring school options in our area right now. She will be incoming K next year. So I'm sure people will ask, hey, you're a BCS parent, why you're running for LASD? But also, it's very simple. I think BCS is part of the community, and I have ideas how I can contribute to the LASD and our community in general. So with regard to 8:30 start time, Bullis currently start at 8:30. I think it works well. On the other side, actually, if I can ask for 8:45, I will go for it.
Yes.
Go ahead.
For the high school candidates, I'm wondering how you feel about the lights on football field.
NVLA, lights on the football field. Hi, everybody. So we had a big night on August 13th. It was late, and it was so good to hear all of the voices. It was, I believe it was Terry that was telling a little bit earlier that it was, it was just important to us to hear everybody. And where do I stand on lights? I would, I want to work with our neighbors to make lights workable for all of us. I, we, we need a few extra hours on our fields each week. We, we need to be able to support our kids with that. Light technology has come a very, very long way so that we don't, you know, intrude into our neighbors. And the biggest concern that we are hearing and that has resonated, and I promise I will chase, and we are all actively chasing and listening to our task force, is the noise in our PA systems. And how do we be good neighbors as the school district and as the two comprehensive high schools? So I absolutely, we hear our neighbors reforming the task force, you've seen all the news around it, and it's on the website too.
Lights in the field. Well, we just got through saying that moving the time to 8:30 start will mean it will be darker earlier in the afternoon to get in all the classes that have to happen. And so lights may become even a necessity at some point. However, there's a lot of research on lights that has been done. A lot of concerns were presented at the meeting in August to the board about sound, about traffic, about other kinds of safety that can all be and are already being addressed by the administration for solving those issues before we even have to make a final decision on the lights. And there's so much research in both sound and lighting technology that I think we can work with the neighbors. And by the way, that task force has 33 members on it that is working with the superintendent now. So there's going to be a lot of input, a lot of expertise.
For the high school candidates, other than lights, what are the, what's facing you? What's the biggest problem that you're looking at? Is there one, these one great, those you're looking at most?
Is there a big issue other than the, other than the lights?
There's, there's always challenges in any school district. One of the upcoming challenges will actually be our budget. Folks tend to think of us as pretty flush, and in my opening statement, I referenced that single bucket, no matter how many kids we have. Three years out, we dip into our reserves based on the number of students coming our way. So we are constantly looking at that, constantly being really careful to make sure that the kids who are getting this world-class education right now, that everybody who comes in the door three years from now gets that same fabulous education. All of those kids coming in the door come with new teachers, of course, right? We have to staff up, which is another budget implication. We have all kinds of other things going on. We have student mental health needs that we need to address at the high school. Shawlee talked about sleep, that benefit, ooh, I'm going to run out of time. That benefit of the late start, kids go to sleep later, their bio rhythms change, they go to sleep later, you get a little more sleep in the morning, that's why that impacts them. We've staffed up with therapists, all kinds of resources on the websites again at the schools for another issue.
Well, I have to say, I agree with Fiona that budget will eventually be a problem, and they're working diligently, as we speak, on building up the reserves for the right number of months and years and so on in the future, should there be another downturn in the economy and stuff, not counting the fact that we'll have more students to deal with and so on. And we have done a lot, even this year, the district on mental health, as Fiona mentioned, they had a summer school component of mental health this year, and they had in the past. So that meant in the summer, you got services during the school year, but if you were in summer school, eh, you're on your own for the summer. Well, there's a continuity that's been built up there. We also have a huge bond that just passed, and so we have that money that is starting to be, $100 million in bond money was just established this last week with a very good percentage rate and so on. But we need to be good stewards of that money, although there's an oversight committee, the board is still responsible on how that all plays out.
Okay, maybe we'll take one last one. Yes?
My question is, actually, as far even for the LASD school
All candidates.
Because they go for middle school. And the question is, what is, are your positions or your thoughts on the processes in, especially in high school, of making students be sure that they have completed their units and they make a smooth transition either into colleges or community colleges or any of those levels or whatever post-secondary, post-high school education they want to go to? Could you give me some information?
So oversight or counseling for graduation, for completing graduation requirements? So you're set up for your next stage? All candidates.
Quick clarifying, for the high school, we could talk about this from both directions. We could talk about it into college or we could talk about it as we receive kids from our partner districts. Which would you like me to hit before I burn my one minute?
Oh, sorry, I want you, about moving from high school to college.
For us, okay, so I'll, I'll advocate a duty to
Even from middle, what the middle school do to high schools to get them into college or whatever?
Okay, so I'll hit the college part then. I'll be the college part. All right. So the minute our kids step on our campuses, they have counseling appointments freshman year, those counselors get them on track to backing up. Our goal is to have every student college-ready. That does not mean that every kid chooses Dakota College. It means that we've done our part to make sure that if that's what they want, that's what they can do. So to that end, across the four years, we're constantly meeting with them, we're making sure that they're taking the courses that are going to get them where they want to go. If they specifically want, if they know they want a major, we're driving them that way, we're helping. Okay. We've got tutorial centers on both of our campuses that are tremendous to keep kids on track academically. We've got college and career centers on both campuses with amazing staff, amazing staff who have relationships with colleges all over the country to help with admissions, help with essays. Every senior has an essay appointment, if not more than one, if they want it, a minimum of one. So we're constantly trying, you know, getting those kids into those, sorry, through the application process. Thanks.
Okay, as Fiona said, we already do a pretty good job with the counseling and the essay part and so on. I do see that we need to do even more, particularly for the more economically disadvantaged student and the ones without parents that have gone through the path from, onto college and so on, because even if they're given the right courses, they're told how important it is, we still need to get the whole family on board on how really important it is, and maybe some more collected things with parents and the community to emphasize how important these sort of things are and training in that category.
You know, in our community, we have some very distinct groups. And for some kids in our, our community, college is not even like a thought, it's a given. You don't even talk about whether you will go to college. It's more whether will you get a PhD or will you stop at a masters. For other kids, this is not even a conversation that they're having in their families. And so, and I know this because I served on the ELAC committee at Almond, oh, I'm sorry, I served on the ELAC committee at Almond. And I know that even for a lot of our families where these children come from, the parents haven't gone to college. The parents aren't even thinking about that. So I would really love to see a pipeline where we're working with our kids so that all of our K-38 kids are thinking about college. I'm not talking about putting that stress on kindergartners, where you're going to go to college, but just making it part of the conversation. I promise I'm not that kind of mom. But a real pipeline between our school district, NVLA, and the Community College District, Foothill D'Anza, where kids are exposed to not just the idea of college, but the benefits of going to college. Thank you.
I really see, I think there's quite divisions in people's thoughts. On one side, I see in this community, a lot of parents want their kids to go, I mean, go Stanford, Berkeley, you know, all these top-line, top schools. At the same time, actually, while I'm serving as an avid mentor at Los Altos High, and also when I was serving, served on the board of Boys and Girls Club of Silicon Valley, I've seen a lot of underprivileged kids really need help, you know? And currently, I'm counseling some senior students, and immediately I told my coordinator, I said, do you have opportunity for the ninth grade? I really want to really go down, you know, that and be able to start helping them I really want to really go down, you know, that and be able to start helping them from the very beginning. So I agree with Shawlee in the way that I think the sooner, probably the better, because I really feel like a lot of people may not understand, particularly if their family doesn't have that kind of background, may not understand what it takes for a successful future. I don't necessarily, college is the path, but I think if they want to go for it, then they need to be prepared. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think that's it for us. I want to thank all the candidates for coming, for making your statements. Great job. And thank you. Thank you. Thank you for her nice backyard. You have time to, you can grab some more food, looks like there's a lot left, and you can also, we have some materials on Measure C on our table, and we hope that you all will continue to educate yourselves and most of all, vote. Thanks for coming.